I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 27th, 2018. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Let's move on to item 3A, please.
Presentation on the possible relocation of the downtown Prescott Post Office.
Good afternoon. Okay. I'm a representative of the U.S. Postal Service Real Estate Department in Dallas, Texas, and I'm here today to discuss a project that's currently under evaluation or just being considered at this point in time for the Prescott Downtown Station. It's always our policy to keep government officials in the community updated on any project that may impact them with the local post office, and a meeting such as this public forum will allow me to provide details to the project. Okay, so as part of the discussion today, I'd like to just touch on the legally mandated process we follow when relocating retail services, the core strategies of the organization, as well as a process for public input. Now, the legal mandate that I reference is 39 CFR 241.4. In essence, it requires that we provide public notification to the city officials and the community who may be affected by a project. This process allows for input which will be considered prior to any final decision being Now, the impetus for this project is part of a national effort whereby the Postal Service continually evaluates our current inventory in an effort to optimize the network. As a result, we're always looking for ways to reduce costs, consolidate operations, as well as increase efficiencies. Now, the case in point is the Prescott Downtown Station. This facility is much larger than what is typically required to conduct our ongoing operations. This next slide shows, it's a good visual of the ultimate plan. Currently, we're evaluating the possibility of disposing our existing facility, which is owned by the Postal Service, and identifying new alternate quarters strictly for our retail operation. Now, that facility would only require approximately 32, 3300 square feet, ideally on a site of about one acre to accommodate roughly 28, 30 parking spaces. Now, previously, GSA did occupy or lease about 11,000 square feet of space within the building, the downtown station. They vacated. Attempts were made to negotiate agreeable terms, but we were unsuccessful. So, right now, we are only occupying approximately 9,000 square feet of space, and the remainder of that building is currently vacant. Now, as I mentioned earlier, anytime we relocate a retail operation, we're legally mandated to follow a specific process, and the steps in this process include: step number one, notification of the project to the mayor, which in fact has been completed; step number two, notification of the project to city officials and the community at a public forum such as this meeting; step three, following this meeting, there's a 30-day comment or appeal period. At the end of that period, all comments received will be evaluated before any final decisions are made; and step number four, we'll formalize our decision by sending written notification to the mayor. That notification will also be publicized at the post office; and step number five, the final decision will ultimately be implemented. At this point, we consider our notification process to be completed. Now, once this process is completed, we're at the stage of evaluating the market for potential buildings to meet our specific requirements. Now, right now, the preferred area we're looking in is within a one-mile radius of our existing downtown station. The specific parking and space requirements include a building of approximately 3300 square feet on a site of approximately one acre to accommodate approximately 28, 30 parking spaces for customers, employees, as well as postal vehicles. So, after a thorough analysis, we'll conduct a site selection with postal officials. We'll evaluate all potential sites with the goal of ultimately selecting a site that best meets our needs. Throughout this process, we will continue to keep our channels of communication open and keep you updated. At this point, this slide here tells you where to write, where to send comments or appeals, negative, positive, directly to me, and any media inquiries should be directed to our communications specialist. And I've got copies of this page, which I'll leave behind. Do you have any questions?
I love the length of your presentation. That was awesome. Questions, comments from the council? Mr. Lamerson.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming for the council. At a different timeframe in history, we had a different life. My wife was procurement officer for GSA, federal government, Plattsburgh, New York. And I understand the area that you're trying to deal with here. At the end of the day, however, I'm an elected official for the city of Prescott, and we're dealing with a historic building in the downtown area. So, one of the things that I always go back to is my general plan. And I guess my question will evolve around, at the end of the day, I know you guys need to move. You know, what you have doesn't fit your need. Is there liberty to try and work with the city to make sure that the building that you presently occupy has an opportunity to come into oversight of the city as to how the disposition takes place?
Ultimately, the project will be publicly advertised, and it will be competitively bid. Once that occurs, absolutely. I mean, at that point, we, you were looking basically to sole source, is that...
Not necessarily sole source.
No?
You know, at the end of the day, you know, we all work for the same customer, the public. You know, you work for the taxpayer, I work for the taxpayer. You know, the difference is, of course, you look at a globally different taxpayer than I do. I look at a very small taxpayer, city of Prescott, what's in the best interest of the city, and that's where my interests lie. So, at the end of the day, what I'm saying is, you know, is there a way to work within the fabric of that comment in the best interest of the city of Prescott, not necessarily globally, in the best interest of somebody out there that just wants to come down and take advantage of who the city of Prescott is in the marketplace?
Well, again, it is our policy. The project will be publicly advertised and then competitively bid.
I hear you loud and clear.
I would venture to guess at that point, the city would then open up discussions with the Postal Service.
Well, the reason for this dialogue is so my fellow council can hear exactly what the process is.
Right.
Okay? It's not to try and put you on the spot. My wife was procurement officer for probably 11 border stations on the Canadian border, and I understand the policy.
Councilman Good?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, this is an important building, historical, right across from the courthouse, which is our historical core. But I understand the conditions of the Postal Service. How much did you lose last year?
It's pretty substantial.
Multiple billions, is that correct? If you decide to close this, which you probably will, the disposal process will be publicly bid to the highest bidder, right? Aren't you required to award that to the highest qualified bidder?
That's not necessarily true. I mean, it's all a negotiated process, so it's not a specific mandate that you have to take the highest bidder, no.
So, you will write a bid specification, publicly post that somewhere, and then take the qualified bids, and then evaluate those, and you can potentially decide, not necessarily on the highest bidder?
That's correct. Postal Service on a nationwide basis has Jones Lang LaSalle on contract with them. So, ultimately, you will see it advertised either through Jones Lang LaSalle or one of the local representatives here who they may ultimately subcontract with. You may not necessarily see it directly through the Postal Service, but it is on behalf of the Postal Service.
Your hope is to be able to find a property within a mile that has these requirements, square footage, parking, et cetera, a full acre? Have you assessed the current market? Are you, do you think it's likely you're going to be able to find what you need?
Well, there's two questions there. At this point, no, we have not ultimately assessed the market. This step in the, this is the first step in the process. Once we get through this process, we'll ultimately engage Jones Lang LaSalle. We've brought this project to their attention. They are evaluating the market. They have not delivered any alternatives to us at this point in time. Now, this being a downtown area, there's a lot of on-street parking. Do I anticipate a one-acre site? In all likelihood, no. I mean, on-street parking is a way of life here in this community, so in all probability, we'll also have on-street parking at whatever alternate location we're at.
But is there a commitment that somehow, some way, there will be another post office within a mile of the downtown core?
Well, that is our focus. We want to keep this retail outlet in this downtown area.
Now, the Miller Valley location is not that far away.
I'm sorry, the what location?
The current post office on Miller Valley.
Oh, the main. But it's still within, our planning team will actually look at the delivery areas. Now, again, this is strictly a retail. It has nothing to do with, there's no carriers within this building. So, they take a look at that from a carrier standpoint, from a retail standpoint. They're not going to overlap so that a new location would impact retail at a nearby facility. They're going to seriously and carefully look at that.
So, describe the services that this new location would provide.
Identical services that you experience right now at the current downtown station.
Just purchasing stamps and boxes and other retail products?
Retail products, that's correct.
And you will be able to post mail there?
Post mail.
Post it. You'll be able to put it in a box and have it...
Oh, absolutely. Yes, there will be P.O. boxes there. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Is this, Mr. Lamar, is this building on the National Register?
I don't know the answer to that. Is this on the National Register?
It could very well be. Being constructed in 19...
I think we need to find that out. I think we need to find that out first because I think there needs to be protection for this community and our heritage on that corner, number one.
There absolutely will be. I've already been in contact with our state historic, well, I shouldn't call it state historic, our preservation officer in DC.
And to a little bit dovetail on Councilman Blair's question, we've alluded to this location and how important it is to our downtown. As you put together the request for proposals, is there any precedent in other communities that are similarly situated where the local government participated in putting that together? I mean, I guess my point is, this isn't the first rodeo for you guys to repurpose something in a core downtown that's important to a community.
Right.
Can the local government have any impact on how that looks or goes out to the public?
It's usually not our process. What specifically were you referring to?
Well, there's obviously projects that would be more beneficial and less beneficial based on what kind of bid you get. You said you don't have to take the highest...
That's correct.
What, in what circumstances would you not take it? What types of things would supersede money, I guess is the question.
Well, case in point. I mean, we, it's a historic building. We need to be absolutely sure that there are restrictions on this building, and somebody's not going to change the historical significance of that building.
What about the use and its impact on the community at large?
That is all taken into consideration.
Okay, and I guess my point is, does the city have some say in that or participate at some level?
Does that come in that letter form you're talking about?
No, no, no. This letter form that I'm referring to is strictly this notification process.
But you're asking for comments, and should that be a comment that comes from the city of Prescott?
Oh.
In other words, we have a county supervisor that's sitting in the office as well. And Yopai County happens to be the county seat here in Prescott, Arizona, right here. And, you know, the county may be interested in office spaces, and they have a very central service to what we offer in downtown Prescott, which we employ hundreds of thousands of people down here. And to have no say or to be left out on that say, so to speak, is kind of hard for me to believe, that the federal government might come in and take somebody else's bid over what's really beneficial to the community. So, I want to make sure that our voice is loud and clear here.
Well, as I've indicated, first step in this process would be during that comment period. In closing, I also indicated we will, as we proceed with this project, continue to keep those channels of communication open. So, we will always be communicating. Now, whether we sit down at a table and you dictate how you'd like to see this process unfold, that is not customary. But no, we will not close the door on...
No, we certainly would never think we could dictate how you dispose of something that you own. We just would like to participate in the process at some level where it's appropriate.
There would, there would be no, no reason we couldn't sit down.
Plus, we have an opportunity to be able, through our real estate people at the city, be able to help find property as well. We happen to have a piece on McCormick Street that we'd love to unload to you.
It's within a mile of downtown.
Yeah, it's got the parking spots, too.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. And I understand you're not from Prescott. You know, at the end of the day, thank you for being here. I don't really envy your job, you know, any more than I envy my wife's. But at the end of the day, you know, we work for the same taxpayer. You know, going along with Blair and Lamar down here at the end of the table, we serve the community of Prescott. And while I realize that you represent the taxpayers of the nation, at the end of the day, government's best closest to the people. And what we're trying to talk to you a little bit about, what you do in downtown Prescott, Arizona, first territorial capital of the state of Arizona, is going to impact us significantly. That's a major icon building in our town. And the fact of the matter still remains, I would hate to see some sort of a star-spangled, oh, those lights that blink and everything, strip club because they bid a high price in the middle of downtown Prescott. What I'm saying is that, at the end of the day, the character and the ambiance of the downtown of Prescott is different than maybe you would find somewhere else in Las Vegas. So, at the end of the day, I would hate to see the federal government sell to the highest and best user, so to speak, at the cost of the character and the ambiance of a very historical community in Arizona.
All your points are very well taken, and they will, like I say, before we move too far into this process, we will continually reach out and speak directly with mayor and council about the process.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Sandra, thanks. Thanks for coming. I would just like to say, I kind of reiterate what Councilman Blair said, is that we do have someone that works with companies, businesses to find sites, and she really knows the area very well. And hopefully, your person can contact her and speed the process along when you get to that point. I think it would be very helpful.
Actually, how do I get this contact information now?
Absolutely. We'll give it to you. Her name is Wendy Bridges.
Okay.
And Wendy could help you find, she knows what's available.
Okay. Perfect.
It'd be great.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
I would like to compliment Councilwoman Orr for bringing up, we're on the same side, okay? We're all taxpayers. We're all residents of the United States. We want to do what's in the best interest of both of us. We really do. So, thank you, Billy, for your comments.
Yeah, we'll contact, we'll get it together with you.
Quick question. Do you, does Councilwoman staff to draft some type of letter for council's consideration, perhaps on the 18th, the meeting of the 18th?
That's a great idea.
Because her deadline is a month from today, I think, 27th, as sort of the city's official comment, something...
I think that would be a smart idea. Thank you, John. Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
I have another question.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to clarify, U.S. Postal Service is a quasi-governmental organization that's subsidized by the federal government but exists separately, and it doesn't have the same federal regulations and restrictions that the General Service Administration does. So, does that give you some discretion when you're deciding to dispose of property?
Well, there's one point I want to make. We are not subsidized by the federal government. We are in fact a quasi-federal government agency, but we are not subsidized by taxpayers or the federal government. We operate exclusively on the services that we provide, the revenue received from the services that we provide. So, in answer to your question, no, we're not getting anything.
So, you continue to lose billions of dollars every year, but you continue to operate without subsidies?
We are continually going before Congress in an attempt to try and operate
Right.
More like a business.
Right.
So, we don't have those billions of dollars of losses because we still have mandates that are put on the Postal Service as a result of being a quasi-federal government agency. And that's what's causing some of these losses that we're experiencing.
All right. Still sounds like a duck and it quacks like a duck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. I'm going to open this up to public comment.
We have one speaker card.
Our family came to Prescott in 1951. I used to live where the public library is now. We've used that post office for many, many years. We tried the new post office, but quite frankly, it wasn't near as good, it wasn't near as friendly as the old post office. So, I look at this this way. The post office funds goes into the federal treasury, the money they make, and the first-class mail pays for itself and makes a profit, actually. But that all goes into the federal fund. And then they dole out what the post office gets to use, and they squeeze, and junk mail does not pay its way. So, my suggestion is, let's first make junk mail pay its way, and second, let's not give the feds that money from the post office. Let them keep it and use it to pay their bills. Now, that's why the post office is squealing and in trouble and not able to make a profit because Congress and entitlements and all these little projects they have in Washington is taking the money from the post office and not giving enough back for them to operate. So, that's a failure of our federal government right there. They're too damn greedy. Another thing I'd like to state on this is that in Europe, they use buildings for hundreds and hundreds of years, 300, 400 years, and they're still in use, and they're maintained and kept up. This building of ours has only been in use about, what, 150 years, something like that? It's a young building, and it's a solid building. And I'll tell you all, they don't build buildings today like they used to. So, what you build to replace this post office will be much shodderier, much less well-designed, and it won't last as long. Now, they say, oh, we have too much space. If you have extra space, rent it out at a profit. Don't put the building up for sale. Don't let someone come in and tear down a good, solid landmark building. Put those, that extra space to use and keep that post office where it is, working as a post office. And get on your congressman's tail and tell him to stop robbing the fund of the post office because that's what they're doing. They're stealing.
Thank you for your comments, Orr.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Although I really don't like podiums. I'm very familiar with...
Well, if you could, please come to the podium, and you have three minutes, and then you can fill out a card when you're done.
Okay. I'm not prepared here, but I'm speaking off the cuff. I am very familiar with, we just call it Goodwin, the post office. I've been inside and out of that building. I have a knack for getting into places where most people don't, and the historic beauty of it is unbelievable. Has anybody been to the courtroom upstairs? It's unbelievable. Then they did, a couple of years ago, they did some really stupid renovations, unnecessary renovations. And I'm not talking the windows or the roof. I'm talking about from one, they destroyed a lot of the bathrooms, they had a lot of original fixtures, and they just, for whatever reason, they took those out, even though they weren't really being used, and put in cheap garbage, it looks like from Home Depot. I hope it wasn't done in a lot. You call yourself an assets. I dumpster dived, and a lot of those things, those silly soap dishes and things, sold for hundreds of dollars on eBay, hundreds. They took out a boiler that, well, actually, they had an old boiler that was the radiator system. They fixed it and it worked, and we're great. And then a short time later, they took it out, put in a quarter-million-dollar boiler that didn't work. That doesn't seem very good or very prudent. I'm a very thrifty person, that's not prudent. Also, too, why don't you rent out those buildings, those offices? They're going to waste. There's great furniture sitting in the back or downstairs, mid-century stuff. It would sell. That stuff's very popular. Nice oak furniture, great stuff. It's just going to waste, it's just sitting there. It's just sitting there. It's terrible. It's a tragedy. I think our historic buildings, to use them as they were intended, is very important for the roots of the community. And as far, sir, as the billions of dollars of loss, the majority of that, or a good portion of that, is caused because Congress has put a mor, or a, what's the term? Not moratorium. Anyway, they require the post office to fund retirement benefits 70 years into the future. So, they're having to pay and fund retirement benefits for people who aren't even born yet. Now, isn't that silly? And I don't understand why that is still going on and why that hasn't been fought tooth and nail. Who does that? Only the post office has to pay that. Nobody else does. That's why there's so much billions of dollars. It's not because they're inefficient. It's not because they, you know, they don't do enough business, I mean, packages. Who goes shopping anymore? Most of those are gone through the post office. My husband, right now, is working 12-hour shifts for the Christmas load. So, I kind of know what those employees do.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Sandra, I would like to address you again. Thank you for being a public servant. At the end of the day, we're not here to dissect you, hon. You're here for a reason. And at the end of the day, the issue is, you guys need to sell the building, or you're going to sell the building, or you're going to move. It's not efficient. My job as a councilman is to figure out what can we work with and how can we work best with the federal government on ensuring the building that is an icon building for the city stays in to some sort of influence with the city. Is there something that can be done at this point? I know you got it, by procurement code, you've got to put it out for bid. At the end of the day, is there something that we can do to help, as a city, set up what it means to bid on that building? That building is something different than let's just make it some sort of a, at the lack of a better word, like I used earlier, just to peddle it off. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're concerned about this downtown of Prescott, the historical character and ambiance of the downtown of Prescott. Is there something we can do, working with the federal government, that would better position the city of Prescott to work towards procuring that building?
I think at this point, the best thing we can do is allow me to coordinate a meeting between the Postal Service representatives and city officials.
Thank you very much. You answered that question because we're on the same page. I think it can be had and can be done.
Okay, let me work on that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So, Sandra, I was on the radio this morning with the Morning Report, talking about the agenda items that we have, and this was one of the agenda items. And then like half an hour later, I heard a person call into the radio and said, he And then like half an hour later, I heard a person call into the radio and said, he heard rumors that they're going to tear the building down. So I think it's really important that it be stated here publicly, that there is no intention to tear that building down.
There is no intention to tear that.
Basically, you're talking about relocating the retail service within a one-mile boundary. So I think it's just really important, because I was astonished, Steve was on the radio, and I heard the guy call in, and I thought, no, that's not what was said. So I just think it's important that we get that message out there, that we're not talking about, this building is not going to be torn down. It will be here long after we're all gone, so, thank you.
Absolutely not, I'll make note of that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks again so much, Sandra, for being here.
Thank you.
All right.
And Sandra, I'm sorry, Wendy is in the audience, Wendy Bridges, so.
Great, okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 3B, please.
Presentation of the water, wastewater and solid waste rate study.
Thank you, Murray. Excuse me, Mayor, councilor, losing my voice. Mark Woodfall, Finance Director, we've been, yeah, it'd be a shame. We've been working for the last three months on some very important projects for the city, which include the impact fee study and the rate study for water, wastewater and solid waste. These are very important, they're going to set the course for the city's infrastructure for the next five years at minimum, even longer. So it, these are important means, I know they're no fun, I know they're long, I know they're very exciting with graphs and numbers, which some of us like, some of us don't. We've been working on the impact fee, and that continues on. We've adopted, the council adopted the Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Land Use Assumptions at the last meeting, and that process is going on concurrently with the rates that we're talking about today. The rates and the impact fees are all driven by capital, and the capital we're talking about today, being funded by rates, is not for new growth. That, of course, comes from the impact fees. This is the growth that's needed to replace in the existing system, and also the improvements that are needed in the existing system. So just to clarify that aspect of this, we have limited today's presentation, just water and wastewater. We took solid waste out just because of time limitations. We didn't want to have to rush and not be able to cover everything, and we're also still working on some proposals for solid waste. With that said, this presentation that we're doing today, because of timing of council, of course, will be on TV, and it'll be rebroadcast on TV, but we're also doing another presentation tonight, the same presentation, at 6 o'clock, for the public who wants to come down in person and ask questions, and hear a little bit more, and we're doing it again on the Fourth of December. With that, we'll get into the presentation. Rate studies in Arizona basically set the cap. This is the cap that is justifiable with the expenses that were presented, that the council can adopt this cap rate. Doesn't mean the council has to adopt it. Council can give direction through this process and opt for other rates that meet these needs or even reduce the needs somehow. This process is ongoing. We got about 58 days, 59 days till the public hearing, but we're going to, again, have these workshops. We're going to be taking public comment throughout this whole process. So the public hearing is just a statutory formal requirement. With that, so we can get to the fun, I will introduce Andrew Reams with Raff Tellis, who is our rate consultant for water and wastewater, and let him take it from here.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Mark. As Mark indicated, the intent really is to provide an update on the preliminary recommendations. There's some statutory drivers, public hearing, that are part of the process. So these are some initial findings. We're looking for low reaction and just general feedback. And as Mark had indicated, you know, there's a public process that we're gearing up towards and publishing the report in ahead of a public hearing before, you know, it's really a set of ordinances for council adoption. So the agenda is around water, wastewater, utility, and ultimately, the preliminary findings. We've structured it, there's a couple, you know, kind of components that cut across both enterprises, both utilities, and then kind of dial into the big drivers and what the impacts and the rates may be. We were asked to prepare a five-year schedule. So while often the focus is kind of the near term with the first set of rates proposed to go into effect March 1st of 2019, we have prepared a five-year schedule that runs all the way through, the last set of increases, January 1, 2023. So then over the next, including this one, five fiscal years. We'll talk about both utilities, as Mark indicated. While the project's a little different, we're looking at capital projects being a big driver for the need to adjust user charges. This is, you know, part of federal government requirements, as we're looking at the timing for planning purposes of debt and debt issuances. Just to remind the city, as the city's done in the past, engage municipal advisors before formally issuing external debt, whether through WIFA or other entities. That said, the firm I work for is a registered municipal advisor, and we do this type of thing all the time. So just to set the stage a bit before jumping into water, you know, while these two utilities, as well as solid waste utility, arrive to most customers on the same bill, they're separate entities, separated enterprises, so as the city budgets and tracks them as separate funds, that's the way we look at it. And we look at water and wastewater and prepare financial plans for each. For each separate utility, we're projecting what the requirements are, and we're starting with, you know, adopted budgets, but anticipating things like inflation, cost increases, as well as the big driver being the variable capital projects, you know. While there's certain amount of capital investment year over year, as you're well aware, there's certainly can be big projects and one-time recurring needs. And so we're factoring those in, how to fund them, and ultimately, the bolded items, that's from a kind of rate-setting standpoint, these are the three things we look at. And we look at, you know, funding expenses. These, you know, are entities and enterprises, and they've got bills to pay, and there's two additional criteria that factor into rates. One is a debt service coverage requirement, and these are legal agreements that the city's has entered into in the past and anticipates with additional debt through WIFA or other agencies to be required, the financial performance requirements essentially, where we're having to have a certain amount of revenues after O and M to meet debt obligations. And then a second related component, which is end-of-year cash reserve targets. Each of the funds has a number of days of O and M as a bare minimum, and so these three work in tandem. You know, certainly, meeting the first one with funding expenses, but we've got this little additional criteria where, you know, there's a certain amount of cash we don't want to fall below in any year. And that's ultimately what's driving both plans, is, you know, not necessarily operations, operating expenses today, but it's over time as we continue to expand the system. More importantly, as Mark indicated, deal with replacements, rehab, one-time projects that we've got some additional needs. So I'm going to start with water fund, is going to follow kind of a similar layout between the two utilities, but we'll start with water. So in terms of the overall rate objectives, you know, these are very similar as what was evaluated about five years ago with the most previous rate study. But in part, we like to level our rate adjustments. Most customers prefer to have more frequent regular adjustments rather than waiting for, you know, kind of us to spend down the money and then need to take a sharp correction, if you will. And so we followed that, and we followed that for the water rate study. One of the important drivers in the city is to present conservation or water use efficiency-oriented pricing structures. As we talked to council and got some of the feedback early on in the study in late August, that was some additional direction that was confirmed, and so we've got a rate alternative, a second rate alternative that increases this conservation sort of efficiency pricing signal, and those are going to be two that we're going to look at. I mean, ultimately, it comes down to providing a stable source to fund the needs for the water fund, the water enterprise, and with utilities such as these capital projects often drive the requirements. That's the case within the five-year period we're looking at. We're also evaluating, the city has two additional kind of charges, if you will, beyond what I consider more general user charges. One of them's a flat fee, aquifer protection fee that was put in a few years ago, and another one is an alternative water surcharge, a volume rate that is in addition to, say, the tiered charges we're going to talk about in a minute, that is applied. We're asked to evaluate these, and we'll talk a little bit more in terms of how this is tied into the overall findings and recommendations. And secondly, there's a statutory requirement within Arizona where the city serves customers outside the city, both within the town of Chino Valley, as well as just the county in general. And that outside-city multiplier for the county is currently 1.4 times the inside-city rates. So we've evaluated this as we did back in 2013, and we're recommending a modest decrease to this that cuts across both alternatives. So we've looked at these, and the final drivers, the city has followed a customer-class cost of service philosophy for many years. And as part of these periodic studies, that was a big driver for us, and it's tied into the findings for both alternatives, one and two. This really sets the stage for what is to follow. And as Mark indicated, now we get into the charts and table part of the discussion. So one option that when we're looking at rates, the last point notwithstanding, certainly, you know, communities and the city, you know, has an option to maintain the existing structure and just certainly, across the board, adjust the increases, if you will, to meet the revenue needs of the system. And so what this chart shows, the current typical bill for a residential customer that uses 5,000 gallons per month is around $38. And if the, what I consider pretty modest increases in the water fund, 2% to 3% a year were to just apply it across the board, we didn't change structure at all, we just increased unit prices, aquifer protection fee, alternative water charge, we'd be looking at about a dollar per month increase each year through each of the five years that we're evaluating. So this gives just kind of a, you know, metric and a measure to kind of see, you know, how these changes sort of coalesce altogether, and this tracks out through that full five-year period. As we're looking at two alternatives who are similar ballpark, but not quite.
Are we allowed to ask you questions in the middle?
Of course.
All right. When you talk about evaluating and all the other stuff, delivery of the water, does it justify a dollar a year increase in the price? I mean, as we're sitting here talking about doing these increases, or dollar a month, whatever the case was, at the end of the day, does it cost us a dollar more as a community to deliver the water to our customers? They should hear loud and clear, it's costing us at least that much money to deliver their water.
And the short answer is yes. That's what's driving the increase, is the need to fund the expenses, and expenses are going up both primarily capital.
I appreciate that. I mean, at the end of the day, we're not here to subsidize a private water user's water. What we are here to do is reclaim on behalf of the city and all the citizens of the city what it costs us to deliver water to our customers. That's what we do. I mean, at the end of the day, our people in the water department know what it costs us to deliver the water, and there's no way that we can deliver the water any more than they can go buy the water in the free marketplace for less money than the city is delivering that water.
I would agree. So on the point and kind of what the major driver for these increases, and, you know, as we look at the kind of aggregate financial plan where, you know, the capital projects is a funding amount, operating expenses, but really focusing on capital projects for the water fund over the five-year period we're evaluating, we're looking at $94 million in capital expenses in total. And identified here, and, you know, it's a big number, but when we break it down, there's a handful of significant or major projects that are driving the need for the increase. Here is a summary that talks about some of those major projects, identifying the aggregate amount of the project, kind of the timing, and I'll start and highlight a couple. The intermediate and Chino booster pump stations, that is a single project, it's the most significant one in the water fund that we're funding and planning on funding over the five-year period. It's roughly $23 million, so it's a big portion of that overall, $94 million, and it's currently happening and certainly is planned to, you know, continue on over the next couple of years.
Another question.
Sir.
Okay, because we get a lot of lip service on a lot of different things, says a public body. Growth or no growth, we still have to pay the cost of improving our delivery system, correct?
The, on that point, the Chino Valley production wells is another series of projects. It's dealing with each one of the wells over the next four years totaling almost $11 million. And so that's part of rehabbing an existing asset, an existing facility that has been in place. Yes, sir?
Mr. Craig, are most of these items that are on here, major project items, are they all rehabilitation, so to speak, or are there any new ones? In other words, is the Chino Valley pump station, is it there, and we're just replacing it?
Yes, Craig Dossett, Public Works. This is a combination of both, rehabbing existing facilities as well as some new. So the Chino Valley booster pump station, that's the existing pump station, so it is a replacement of that facility. Parts of that facility currently go back to 1947 and 1955.
And I wanted the people to hear that, because, again, the reason why the rates are going up is because existing infrastructure is now starting to wean, and we need to redo it all.
Correct. And then there are some other projects like Airport Well 5 and 6. Those would be new water production wells in the airport area, and those will be considered for impact fees as well.
Thank you.
Without dwelling on each one of the projects, certainly Craig and city staff can answer more detailed questions around these, but this is just a highlight, you know, in not just sort of an aggregate dollar amount, as I often look at it when we're looking at big picture at these utilities and financial plans, but breaking it down into projects themselves, and is highlighted here, the last one is a series of main replacements throughout the city. So a combination of factors, but all in all, what this means is that, you know, the water fund, the amount that's generated through revenues today is insufficient to meet the needs of the fund through the five-year period, which is necessitating the need to adjust user charges and rates. So as, I want to switch, focus a little bit into the alternatives, and one of the questions, you know, around the alternatives, is, you know, they're very similar in many regards, but there are a few differences. And so what this table attempts to highlight is both. So we've got, you know, they're generating, designed to generate the same amount of revenue. The current aquifer protection fee and the alternative water surcharge rate under both these alternatives is proposed to stay the same, not increase those components, the 70 cents or so per month for a 5/8 inch customer on the aquifer protection fee, and the 89 cent per 1,000 gallon surcharge for the alternative water volume rate. Those are in place. Both of these alternatives phase to and maintain a customer-class cost of service through and by the final year of our rate period or fiscal year 22, 23. Both reflect the recommendation and the evaluation in terms of the outside-city multiplier that would go from 1.4 to 1.38 times the inside-city rates for those customers in the county. And then we start to see some of the differences, and this is really around that idea, and it.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. I don't truly understand what is alternative one and what is alternative two.
So that's where I'm trying to get to, so that now, like, they both handle and address many items the same, but when we get to the kind of key water rate structure elements, there's a base charge or a fixed charge, irrespective of the amount of water use, and then there are volume rates and tiers, and that's where they get a bit different and they depart. So, yes, sir?
Yeah, just to take what he had just said and kind of explain it a little better, not, no offense to what you said, but.
Just, you know, this is the first time we've seen this, I was going to make sure.
Right, it's the idea of almost flatlining it regardless of your level of usage versus bigger steps if you're a bigger consumer.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So there is the idea that regardless of your use, the steps are consistent and the same size versus if you're a bigger user, there's a jump between the steps of the amount you pay.
We already have.
This would be making the step.
Okay, so this is increasing those tiered rates.
That's the alternative. That's the alternative. That's correct.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Councilman Blair helped me go back in history. Aquifer protection fee was established by the council to set up a fund capable for low-interest loans to help people that were in the community on septic tanks get into a different level of quality of the septic tank. Thank you, Mark. That fund was set up very specifically to help fund a level of septic tank that was different than the old style. And the idea was because we needed to protect the aquifer from refuse, or whatever you want to call that stuff, and we needed a higher grade septic systems, and we set up low-interest rate loans using the aquifer protection fee and made that available to those people in the city to try and relate that over.
I'll be probably disengaged by Mr. Woodfield, but because of North Prescott Sewer District and the leakage we had in a lot of the septic systems within the city of Prescott, that aquifer protection fee was suggested back when Jim and I were on the Water Committee with Marlin Kirkendall to have a mechanism through the water bill to be able to provide funds to do something different in the future.
Just to clarify some aspects, there was the Water Committee that brought forward a recommendation to implement a fee to do something similar to what Councilman Lamerson stated. There were a lot of legal issues and problems with that type of thing. The aquifer protection fee was actually put in place during the 2014 study as a way to fund the studies to figure out how to reduce the particulate issues in the waterways, not to fund any loans or anything like that. That came out, that was a recommendation of that committee that went to council, and then nothing, no change, nothing was done because there was a lot of legal challenges and problems with trying to do what the committee had recommended.
It's that ongoing deal where it's taken us five years to get the study done.
Right. The aquifer protection fee was put in place, 70 cents per account for the 5 8-inch meter to fund those studies to figure out what we needed to do.
So did we accomplish our goal?
Yeah, it's still going on.
It's still going on.
The point there being is there's no justification for the 70 cents a month on everybody's water bill, then why do we continue it?
There's justification. We're paying for the studies to figure out what we need to do to fix the waterways and respond to ADQs.
Some of you were on council, you recall in 2014. It had to do, partially at least had to do with the water quality in the lakes and funding those kinds of studies. And so it's a water quality fund and primarily going to studies and how you either clean up the lakes or prevent the TMDL, those kinds of issues, if you recall that, versus the-
Sorry? The total bacterial load.
Yeah, so it's related to those issues that were kind of peaking in 2014, we're dealing with ADQ, and we're continuing to do the studies now. So it is, the money's being used, and it is justified because obviously the water quality in the lakes continues to be an issue. So it has to do with that bigger issue, sort of global issue, rather than specific loans to replace something.
You made your paycheck this week. Thanks for explaining that, John. There was justification for doing what we did, and it had to do with procuring, because of an assured waters circumstance and all that other stuff, that the TMDL, we were addressing that issue when ADQ said we had to address that issue. And the fact of the matter is, the studies are still ongoing, and that's the justification for charging the 70 cents on the water bill.
And just for the record, I make my paycheck every month.
Yeah, I know you do. And I wasn't arguing that point, I was just saying, thank you for stepping up to the microphone and explaining. Here's the justification.
Proceed, Andrew. Thanks.
So the two alternatives come down to how the fixed revenue through the base charges recovered versus the volume rates. When we see some numbers, this will play out, and I'm going to highlight those differences a bit more. From a revenue recovery standpoint, the trade-off is guaranteed sort of fixed revenue, both in the base charge irrespective of usage. And then in those sort of winter months or year-round with indoor use for systems like Prescott, there's a little more reliability in the first 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 gallons from each customer. So there's a little bit of trade-off there, that when you send that signal, then the system's accepting a little more risk. And recovering more revenue in tiers two, three, and four, and that revenue can be subject to weather and customer behavior patterns, and so it's a little less certain. So this has got a lot of numbers on it. Let me kind of try and break it down, where we've got base charge today, and that's the current column. This is assessed to all customers, and it varies based on the size of the water meter. The vast majority of, say, residential customers are 5 8-inch or the base meter size. And so today, that charge is $13.69 per month. Under alternative one, we're proposing that to increase, that 2% to 3% a year. So that unit price each year goes up, the overall percentage change that's indicated in the last row of the slide. Under alternative two, with the driver being, we want to, under this alternative, enhance the conservation signal that we're already sending. So one way that we do that is we put more recovery and more charges on the volume side. So under this alternative, we're maintaining the current base charge as it is today. It's not increasing in any one of these years, so it's 13.69 for the base customer and customers with larger meter sizes, as you can see. By the final year, the fifth year, the gap is about $2 per month between alternative one base charge and the alternative two base charge. Now, the second modification is on the volume side. So both between the base and the volume, these are designed to generate the same amount of revenue. And the tiers that are in place were implemented in the last rate study. We're proposing to maintain the sort of amount of volume of water, so the first 3,000 gallons, the next 7,000 gallons, the next 10, or in tier four, above 20,000 gallons per month for a single-family residential. So these unit prices, $3.21, there is a relationship between tier two today to tier one. That relationship is tier two is one and a half times tier one. Tier three is 2.25 times tier one, and tier four is, I'm sorry, I spoke, two and a half times. And tier four is four and a half times tier one. So as the, under alternative two, the main change we're making with the volume pricing, we're not modifying, proposing modify the amount of water in each tier. It's really just increasing that threshold. So instead of one and a half times under tier two, we're proposing to have the tier two be twice as much as tier one. And phased to that over a period of time, so it won't quite get there until the final year. Under tier three, we're proposing under alternative two to increase that to three times instead of 2.25 times tier one. And as the final tier, four and a half times is a pretty strong signal, we're proposing to maintain that relationship. But this is where kind of the dynamic comes in, it's a zero-sum game. So as we're increasing, say, the unit prices in tier two through tier four, that means we're generating more revenue for that usage, and the tier one price, everything else being equal, can be a little bit lower. And that's where we're seeing this trade-off over time between these two alternatives, if you will.
Tier two is how, what volume?
It's the next 7,000 gallons, so-
10,000?
3,001 through 10,000 gallons.
Right. And tier three is?
10,001 to 20,000 gallons.
Now, one of the problems is we haven't really established a usage goal. I know over the last 10 years, our usage has dropped from about 150 gallons per person per day to about below 120. So if we establish a goal that we would like to see residents achieve, then our rate structure should be designed around incentivizing users to reach that goal. So right now, we don't have a goal. We're just focusing on our cost of delivery and then trying to build in some incentive for conservation, correct?
That's a fair representation. Really, the goal in the industry would be sort of a water budget. You would essentially tell a customer, here is the amount of water that's the efficient amount, but yes.
So if we had a goal and we were able to put together a plan to help residents achieve that goal and monitor their progress towards it, and either be penalized if they disregarded it and went in the wrong direction, or were rewarded by making progress towards that goal, I think that would be the ideal type of structure. Right now, looking at your rates, even at the tier one level, their costs are going up. So if we assume that we have 1.6 people per water user at 3,000 gallons, that's about 55, I think, gallons per person per day. Calculate that right. So if we're averaging below 120, trying to get to 50 or 60, I think, would be a laudable goal.
Around 50 is the EPA's sort of super-efficient user goal for just indoor. So that just gives you kind of a point of reference that 50, 55 gallons per capita per day is if you've got a very efficient sort of house with devices and you're practicing wise water use behavior.
Just to clarify, our Department of Water Resources allocation is 115, 115 gallons per person per day for safe yield purposes. So that's our, as you recall from the other discussions we've had. So in terms of our water resource, we should be comfortable, but per our decision order, 115 a day per person would be a possible number to look at, but I don't know how complex that gets.
The previous page said the average water customer is using 5,000 gallons a month, and 1.6 people per account, that's 104, so-
I guess, let me clarify, though. The 115 a day, it's an average, and it also includes commercial uses. So that's, so I don't know how you would subtract that. For DWR purposes, I don't know if you can subtract out, I mean, I guess we could, in theory, do the numbers. But we are meeting that average person per day, we're well, we're within that number on an average basis.
Or 115.
But that includes commercial uses, right?
That skews the ability to put together a plan that really addresses our residential use.
Well, that's what DWR is an issue.
But you don't have to, you wouldn't have to tie the stratification of the rate structure to what ADWR is. It could be a set aside totally different. They don't have to be in some kind of symbiotic parallel relationship. One's permitting from ADWR, the other is trying to incentivize conservation.
Required to do that, but if we want to manage our water resources well, we can establish a plan to do that, and then separate commercial from residential so residential users could monitor their efforts. And that's what I'd like to see, and then be rewarded financially for doing a diligent job there.
Just a comment, Councilman Good. You know, definitely always a great goal to try to encourage people to be conservation-oriented. The problem here is we're not metering people, we're metering houses. And you are encouraging a 1.6-person household to be conservation-oriented, which means you're encouraging, and not that it's bad or good, but somebody with one person in a house is probably going to do very well on the rate structure, but if you have a family of four, you're out of luck.
I brought up that concern before. I wouldn't want to penalize families or large families that they may be doing a good job per person.
Yeah.
Their water bill is going to be substantially higher, and they end up having to pay a premium that I don't think should happen.
Right, and which, I think that gets you into the problem with trying to set a rate structure that's so focused on that. I think it's important to encourage customers to try to achieve these goals. We do it through education, and we do it through water incentives and other things like that. I don't think you can very effectively do it through rates on meters as a house as a whole. I think what you're doing there is you're just kind of making affordability in a community geared toward a certain-sized household, not towards a family household or something bigger. So I would encourage us to look for better ways to do it than through rates.
If we really give it some serious thought. So that's our option, is to say, well, we have a fixed cost of delivery, and that should be equally shared by every water user. So that's our base rate. And then adding a tier structure to either penalize or reward conscientious use of that water is a second add-on, which I think we've done with our first tier structure. And like I said before, I think if we bumped it up a little bit, there would be more incentive to continue on doing the right thing. And then we'd have to just separate commercial users in some way so that we could monitor commercial use, because we're not monitoring that at all right now, right?
But we monitor everything in finance, but-
But it's just a bill.
Yeah. And again, that's what alternative two was established for, was to address your concerns that you expressed back in August, was to kind of keep that low-water user very small, actually almost nothing of a rate increase through this. It's four cents per 1,000 gallons increase. So that was the goal of alternative two. Alternative one keeps our same stratification that we've had. So that was essentially the difference between the two tiers.
Yeah, but when we get up into tier four, you're either talking about big families or somebody who has a damaged water system and they're wasting it.
Yeah, you're not talking about big families in tier four. Those are people with lawns, those are people with damage to their system and that type of thing. And I think that the next slide where we look at average-
Person, then I think, yeah, they should be paying more.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of people that hit tier four. Did you pull the, it's very small, Andrew can correct me, but I think it was like 10% of our usage hits in tier four, if that.
Yeah, I didn't double-check and follow up with that number, I just don't have it at my fingertips, but I don't even know that it's quite that much.
Yeah, that might even be high. It's very small.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. So, Mark, have we not, over the last, I don't know how long the tier system has been in that we have now, we've really conserved well in our city?
Yeah, and if you look back at water consumption and water pumping, you can tell, when we adopted this aggressive, very aggressive industry standard tier system to encourage conservation, we had a significant conservation. It was probably close to 10 years ago now, and you can, 2006, 12 years' time. And you can see the pumping requirements in our well field go down as this went into place.
Well, and our gross usage is exactly what it was 10 years ago, plus or minus, correct? So if you wanted to-
I guess my question is, if it's not broken, why fix it? If we have a tier system that is working, and it seems to be working and quite well, why would we go through restructuring and possibly have unintended consequences on other people that when we have, what we have is working well? I don't understand why we'd restructure everything.
Well, and Councilwoman Gray, great observation. I mean, there's other ways to encourage conservation-
That's right.
-through conservation efforts. And I think that's really going to see where you see more effectiveness of it. The rates are just too, I mean, we can't monitor people in a household in utility billing and try to bill a tier based on the number of people in a household, because that fluctuates constantly. Obviously, for rewarding low-water users, we're rewarding people that are- Obviously, for rewarding low water users, we're rewarding people that are using very little, but they could be using very little because there's one person in the house. Or there's two people in the house, or it's, they're not their primary home and they're only here on weekends or things like that. So I, and again, we brought it forward because it was brought up at the earlier council meeting as something you wanted to look at. Staff would recommend alternative one.
Okay.
Because that's a continuation of the, of the structure we put in place. But we wanted to bring an option because of course council is the final deciding factor in this.
I guess it, it just seems to me that our citizens have done a phenomenal job of conserving. And then now we're going to ask you to do a little bit more and tighten that noose a little, I don't know. It just seems that's not the way to, to show appreciation and to reward when now we're going to make it even a little bit harder for everybody. I'm, I'm just concerned about creating a, another system when we've done really good with the system that we have. This is my two cents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor Mangrilli. At the end of the day, I'm going to echo Billy a little bit. If it isn't broke, don't fix it. And I want to share a little bit of respect for the accolades of city manager down there. At the end of the day, you know, we've done a lot of good things here. And you know what? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I really respect what you had to say. The community has done a great job of stepping up, doing what we need to do. And the citizens of Prescott are doing a much better job of managing our water than any place in the state of Arizona. You know, and I get tired of hearing all the rhetoric about what we're not doing rather than what we are doing. And what we have done is a lot of good things.
That's correct.
And Mayor, can I clarify? Our allocations, actually 150, 150, not 115. Our use is 115 per person. So we're well below our, our safe yield numbers. And the other thing I think has been mentioned before is that we, we put back in the ground more, last year, more water than we took out with the combination of reclaimed water and our surface water. So our net, you know, removal of water from groundwater was zero. Or, you know, or so I think your point, Mayor Protem, is well taken that, you know, the, the, the community here, the users do really, really well.
Me too.
For water conservation purposes and use sort of the minimal amounts and, and, I mean, I was probably a tier three or four at one point because I had a broken pipe, but you know, so those things spike. And you get hit for sometimes thousands of dollars. I was only hit for, you know, hundreds, but it hurts. You know, on those, on those months where sometimes, you know, things happen, something breaks, you don't realize it. So it is, I think your, your points could, is, is, you know, is well taken that those tier fours, particular threes are not, I, I doubt there are consistent users, you know, across the board.
And so you said that we've put more into the system.
Take our reclaimed water plus our surface water and, and what's the word?
Recharge?
Recharge.
Thank you.
Last year was, was basically we, we put back in as much as we took out when you total it all up.
So in the city of Prescott, we actually have reached safe yield.
In 2017.
2017, thank you.
That's not the measurement of safe yield. Where, yes, we are within, well within our safe yield. What we remove at 115 is below the 150 we're allowed to under our decision order. But our, the, in, in for all, in practical terms, we, we recharged as much water last year as we took out when you add our surface water recharge plus our reclaimed water recharge.
Great. Thank you, John.
And you know, one of the things I think is important to consider too, this is more of a stick approach and there's nothing wrong with the stick approach, but there's a carrot approach that I have seen documentation that is as successful or even more successful, things like showerhead handouts. You know, I, those are the kinds of things, if you're really looking at conservation, that we should consider for budgeting next year. They could be more impactful without actually being a stick. It's more of a carrot. So that's just something to think about if you don't do some alternative structuring or stratification.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. I think we ought to pay close attention to, we, we need to be careful about what we wish for. We may just get it because I think that there's a certain amount of water that needs to go through the system. Is that right? So if you conserve so much, then all of a sudden you are, are putting your wastewater system at, at risk. And so, you know, I think that, that what Councilwoman Orr said is, is, is very pertinent for now. I think we've done a remarkable job of conserving just with what we've been doing.
Are we still setting the rates for the, for freshwater off the wastewater? How are they working that now? I know they had a phone call to me that, that my water, my water use went way up because I had a leak and they called and asked me if it was because of my watering, if it was outside or if it was inside.
Yes, we use winter, uh, winter average, uh, October through April average to set the sewer usage.
Okay.
And we, we, we look, we spend a lot of time analyzing, so we don't penalize people for outside watering. If we see it, you've been in your place a long time. If, if this year was a lot different than the other year, you're going to get a call.
And the point I'm bringing up is I appreciate that and the customer does as well, because if you see a real high spike and you call them and ask, hey, did you have a leak? And you say, yeah, we had a leak, it's fixed, then we shouldn't be penalized for that.
Yeah, and we, and we reduce your average that you'll pay the next 12 months for those when we can find them.
Councilman Good.
Well, I'd just like to say that, yeah, I think putting the tiered rate structure in 12 years ago was a great idea and it's proved to be, to be valuable. That doesn't mean that we've picked the ideal, perfect rate structure and we should never change it. We are going through significant growth and for those people who have adopted good water use, they're not going to be penalized in any way. Their rates would probably be pretty much the same. But for those who want to go and do more, I'd like to see them rewarded for doing more. And for those who are relocating here from areas where water is not a concern and they decide they want to recreate their own previous landscaping, they should be very aware when they see their water bill that those types of choices when it comes to landscaping and, and plant and, and shrubbery and other selections are probably not appropriate when it comes to their costs. And they can make a better choice to keep their rates reasonable and low. So, you know, there's no, no denying that we're growing and we want to make sure that we do the best job we can with the resources that we have for as long as we have. So I think providing some additional incentives is not going to hurt anybody and it's going to help those who want to do more. And it'll get the attention of the people who are not using water efficiently. So I think the alternate two is, is a good step in that improving direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
So on the point of comparing these two alternatives, this gives an idea in terms of different users. And so what we're looking at is the current bill for a single family residential customer in different months or different user profiles, including ones that, um, pretty rare, but in that sort of upper tier, if you will. And so this shows, you know, 3,000 gallon customer, kind of a typical winter bill or 5,000 gallon, a typical annual water bill, uh, what those amounts are today and, and this trade-off. Under alternative two, whether it's in 19 or 2023, the, uh, by design, the lower volume users' bill isn't increasing as much or, you know, in some cases, pretty flat. And then as the alternative two, that sort of tiered relationship, as you use more and the higher tiers, then the gap between those two increases over time. And that's, you kind of see that playing out. And so it's, it, it both provides the bill impact as well as just this kind of trade-off that revenue stability versus pricing signal or Councilmember Goods, you know, the, we phrased it sort of this reward, if you will, for, for lower users. So this, you know, as we were asked to look at more conservation oriented alternative, we kind of put that together. So we're looking at the bills if they would go into effect in March and then five years out and kind of the final year of the transition period, if you will.
Okay, Councilman Lamerson has a question, comment?
I didn't have a question per se. I had a comment and a question. Andy, thank you. Um, I agree with Councilman Good and some, some reference to going back in timeframe. Thank you for the compliment there, Mr. Goodwin. We adjusted our water rates and we reduced the water consumption significantly. Thank you, Mr. Blair, for being here at the time. And, uh, you know, we took a lot of lip service. We were doing what we had to do to try and reduce the water consumption in an attempt to reach a unrealistic goal stated by the state of Arizona, reaching safe yield. But at the end of the day, we're using less water. I think I just heard either the manager or the attorney say, we're using less water today than we were using 10 years ago. And at the end of the day, the people who've done that isn't up here. It's the citizens of Prescott. And the fact of the matter is, you know, we've increased the population of the city dramatically over the last 10 years and we're using half the water. And there's a reason for that and it's called conservation and it's called appropriate use of water. So I guess the point I was trying to make there is that I appreciate why you're here and you're reiterating circumstances of what we've done. I think it's important for the community to hear, you've done a good job. You've done a real good job, City of Prescott, at doing what we were assigned to do and that was to reduce our water consumption, which we have. It's a limited resource and city manager, your job is to make sure that the citizens of the city of Prescott knows it all the time. You know, we, we take a lot of riffraff out there and we take a lot of shots for Prescott being the ill of all the planet because we're going to make everybody dry up and float away when indeed we're the only people in the AMA who's reached safe yield.
Yes, we are at the forefront of water conservation, not just in the AMA, but in the state of Arizona.
Thank you, and we need to hear that all the time. The city of Prescott, where it all began for the state of Arizona, has demonstrated the leadership role that we took on many years ago. We have obtained our ability to put as much water, in fact, more, back in than we took out. Nobody else in the state of Arizona can claim that, only the city of Prescott.
Thank you, Councilman Lamerson. Good point. Go ahead.
So, um, switching gears to the wastewater fund. And as we look at rate alternative, we're proposing one alternative. Similar rate objectives to the extent that, you know, leveling, uh, the adjustments, avoiding sharp increases, providing a stable source of revenue to fund the needs of the system, including capital projects and, and existing and, and anticipated debt service and maintaining the customer class cost of service, uh, rate recovery philosophy cities had for a number of years. So, you know, kind of looking at the across the board adjustment, uh, similar kind of dynamic where, um, the percentage needs or increases are slightly higher over time, over the five-year period in wastewater relative to water. And we see this play out a bit, but for a typical user, in this case, that 3,000 gallons of winter period use is market indicated how the volume is billed for a residential customer. We're looking at about a dollar a year. And as it increases a bit, it gets a little closer to with rounding, approaches $2. Uh, I'm sorry, a month for a typical customer. Uh, there's, there's quite a bit less variation on the wastewater side, as you may imagine. You know, it's more on the indoor water use, so get a little less of the lawns and with winter period use driving it, uh, there's, there's less outdoor discretionary water.
Any just another question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is it reasonable to assume, and I hate assumptions, but is it reasonable to assume that the delivery for the cost of water for the citizens of Prescott via having to pay for the maintenance on our pipes and the maintenance on our systems, et cetera, along with the cost of bringing the water in, has gone up a dollar a year?
I mean, that, yes, and on average, yeah.
That's my point. I think the citizens need to hear loud and clear, our costs continually go up. Okay, the cost to bring their water to their tap is a dollar more a year, a dollar more a month, or a dollar more a week, or whatever the case is. Here's the deal, guys, to bring you the water that you use every day, here's what it costs.
Or to take that water away and, and treat it and meet, uh, state and federal regulations. And so that, that's been a driver in the wastewater fund. It continues to be. The, the previous study five years ago, uh, the city was embarking on a pretty significant set of wastewater capital projects. That has continued, but it, it's the idea that, um, consolidating down to a single treatment plant. So there, there are improvements in this five-year period. You know, we aggregated the dollar amount, a little less than water, but 67 million and just aggregate capital. And much of that, as, as we look at the major projects, it's around, um, getting, you know, the size of the mains sufficient so that when there's one water reclamation facility in about six years, the, the infrastructure is there to support it. You know, I won't rehash history, but I mean, certainly the city has evaluated this subject and, and, you know, the idea of maintaining two treatment plants was much more expensive. So while we look at the outcome of a very deliberate, uh, intentional process that also results in an increasing, say, rate in this case, um, you know, kind of in hindsight, we don't, we didn't head down the path of maintaining two plants, which would have, uh, in hindsight, you know, put us in a position where we'd need more money than we're asking for today. So that's always the, the tricky part of, you know, we've kind of made that decision and the city's been heading in that path.
And I'd like to make a comment is that that rate is almost identical to the current rate of inflation, 2.8%, which is a dollar on $36 as a base. So I think that's pretty easily justified and understandable by our customers and our citizens that inflation does cost our operations and that's an eminently reasonable number. Thanks.
Good question. Craig, another question because I think it's important. This council made a decision, other councils to put our, both of our, uh, reclamation facilities into one. Do you have an idea about how much this city will save by only operating one plant and have everything centralized? I know that's a tough number because we haven't run the.
I had that number several years ago. I don't today. But in regards to their like airport phase two, second bullet from the bottom at 18.8 million. If we didn't do that, we would be replacing or upsizing SunDog and the dollar value on that was about 59 million. To give you a comparison there.
So this community is saving roughly over $30 million in doing, in rates and, and adjustments because of what we've done.
Correct.
Thank you.
Remember too, just on that, Mayor, is that centralization is also, it, it's not just the savings. It's, I think Andrew mentioned, it, it, there's regulatory requirements by EDEQ that, that are sort of pushing that too. So it is sort of these external factors that are coming into effect or to create the necessity to, to centralize.
Sometimes we call those unfunded mandates, John. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Craig, could I ask you a question? Cause Steve brought up, Sishka brought up the idea that you need water in order to do this system. I mean, you need, have we ever gotten so low in the use of water that we were concerned about our wastewater facility?
Yes. Billy, we broke the pooper when, when we went into conservation mode and we, we didn't have enough water going through the system.
I, I remember something about that.
I'm just sharing with you, we created millions of dollars with the damage.
It, it has changed our process. We are not having trouble with as far as enough water to convey, um, the product down the collection system.
That was really diplomatic.
It can be a mess.
When it comes, when it comes to the, the SunDog wastewater treatment plant or the airport water reclamation facility, yes, we've seen significant difference in the concentration of the water that, that gets to the facilities. And that's, that's the change at, at SunDog. SunDog is capable of handling 6 million gallons a day of water. But today, because of the concentration change, it's only capable of handling 3 million gallons of the concentration of water that comes into it. So from when it was originally designed to today, it's essentially has capacity of half of, of the original design. The airport water reclamation facility, we have designed it to handle and manage the higher concentration of water that we are getting today.
Okay, thank you.
As well as we have conservative in, um, in our design to, so if it continues to get stronger yet, our design has considered that going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, I'm going to ask the council if they can hold questions and if you can get through this, uh, rest of the presentation quickly. I want to make sure you have time for public comment and a little break before 3 o'clock. So go fast.
Much more simple kind of dynamic on the wastewater side. This puts on a chart the proposed option. And we're looking at maintaining, keeping the monthly service charge the same and adjusting the volume rates. Essentially, there's two sets of users. Right now, the city had historically kind of collapsed. Many Arizona communities had up to 30 or 40. We're now down to residential, non-residential, and septic haulers are those external entities that, that discharge a, a very highly concentrated wastewater effluent. So this is, you know, the proposed rate, uh, rates, if you will, designed to generate 3% to 4% additional revenue each year, uh, over the, uh, period. And that's incremental, you know, kind of accumulates, if you will. Uh, in terms of the impacts, you know, we use three, five, and sevens a little bit on the high side. You've got to be a pretty, uh, big user to discharge 7,000 gallons or, or inefficient or maybe even a leak. This just gives an idea of, you know, typical user, we're looking at, uh, dollar a month initially, and just as that accumulates out five years, uh, that difference is about $6.50 in aggregate, five years out. And, uh, similar trade-off, uh, you know, 5,000, 7,000 increases a bit, uh, when you're a larger wastewater user or a residential user in this case. But this just gives an idea of different users and how they may be impacted. Now, the, the question that often comes up is, how do we compare? And while, as throughout this discussion, Prescott has, is a unique community with a unique set of challenges, whether it goes back to some of the water pumping restrictions or just the age of the community itself. So as much as this question does come up, uh, we, generally, it's very difficult to compare one community to the other. With that said, um, we've put together water and wastewater bills for typical residential customers. And you can see, sign in the middle, whether it's the current or either alternative, um, you know, Prescott would be in a similar spot. Now, certainly would be going up a bit, uh, but very similar to Cottonwood. And in the case of Chino Valley, and Cottonwood does this as well on the wastewater side, uh, they've made a choice, they, they charge a flat amount. They don't have a volumetric component of their bill. And certainly Chino Valley had been, you know, five years ago, is updating a similar comparison, $58. So they continue to have cost increases, but they just have a flat amount. So there isn't a variation. You have 1,000, 10,000, it's still a flat charge. And, uh, so we're seeing that a bit. But in general, you know, Prescott Valley on the, kind of the lower end. And I think a couple of components there. I mean, the topography, the geography of the city is, is a bit unique and, uh, is capital's driving and while it's regulations on one hand, um, but also we're replacing a lot of pipes, a lot of older infrastructure. And, uh, so that kind of trade-off, I think Prescott Valley, at some point in the future, they're going to be playing catch-up as their infrastructure starts to age. So with that, uh, that's really the kind of end of my prepared slides. And, uh, thank you.
Very good. Questions, comments from the council?
I think we're in a good spot.
There's a lot of good news out there in regard to our water usage. I would agree. And it was stated earlier that we are one of the leaders in the state for conservation. And I think that's very obvious when you see that we're at 115 gallons per person per day and ADWR allows us 150 per person per day. That's something to brag about as well as all the growth we've seen over the last 10 or more years. And our water usage has flatlined. Uh, and that's something, again, to brag about. Never mind the fact that we have, uh, last year, more put into the aquifer than we took out. So those are all great bullet points and I think, uh, great decisions in the past by our previous council. And most importantly, as Councilman Lamerson pointed out, we have citizens who are very conscientious and want to conserve water. And so I'm glad we have those opportunities to reward those people that do that. Uh, if there's no questions or comments from the council, we'll go to public comment. Let me remind the public, you have three minutes, you're addressing the council, and this is your opportunity for your thoughts and comments. If you have questions, please direct those to appropriate staff after the meeting.
The first speaker is Fred Oswald.
Well, thank you. Fred Oswald, 1520 Magnolia Lane. I'm one of your conserving users. My wife and I use about 1,200 to 1,300 gallons a month, which is about 20 to 21 gallons each a day, which is one of the lower users. I'm concerned about the conservation signal. And from the presentation, it, it looks like I would favor alternative two very strongly. Uh, in fact, I, if I were doing it, I would go further. The, um, you have a four and a half times, uh, ratio between tier one and tier four. And I've done a little study of, of some of our neighboring communities and Prescott is a leader in that way. Prescott Valley, for example, has only a one and a quarter, uh, ratio. But, um, uh, so what's the town by the San Francisco Peaks?
Flagstaff.
Flagstaff, right. Flagstaff is close to Prescott in, in terms of the water rates for, for heavy users versus light users. But I'm, I'm concerned about the, the conservation signal in the water rates, especially for a light user like me, there's not much of a signal. Looking at my recent water bills, 80 to 85% of, of the bill has been fixed charges and only 15 to 20% has been based on usage. So I would like to encourage to get the fixed charges lower and the, um, variable charges higher. And, uh, again, alternative two, better addresses, but I would like you to go further. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Leslie Hoy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And thank you for the interesting presentation. As you know, um, conservation is dear to my heart and I do agree that we've done a great job in Prescott. However, the, there's room to improve and I hope that we don't give the public a signal that we don't have room to improve. This morning on Councilwoman Blair's show, I heard that our population is expected to reach 80,000 eventually. And if we're going to reach 80,000, I won't be here, thank goodness. It's really important that we think about people in the future and so we can't stop conserving. Water is a finite supply, no matter how great technology is. Unless they determine a way that we can reuse or re-drop, and that's not too likely, we do really need to think about the future when we're conserving. I think it's unfortunate that we can no longer ask any questions at council, but I'll throw these out in case a councilperson would be interested in asking these. I noticed the category in the volume chart for non-residential. And I don't know what that is, if that's commercial, but the rates are lower than they are for residential. So it would be great if someone would ask why that is. And my other question I'm wondering about is whether rates for effluent were included anywhere in these studies and whether the rates for effluent are going up. And, um, if nobody's going to ask these questions, would it be possible to know who the appropriate staff person is to?
I would start with Mr. Woodfill.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Any other questions, comments from the council at this point?
Yeah, I, I just want to say I agree with Leslie in the fact that, um, we're talking about conservation. We had this good discussion in our, at our water group, and I think it is, uh, with through the Contractors Association, irrigation groups out there, the landscapers, that they get together with their higher volume customer and do an assessment of their irrigation systems and make sure that they're the top of the art and they're not leaking, they're not spraying concrete. There's ways to save water and if we don't pay any attention to it, then we'll never save anymore. But I think that commercial use focus needs to be high on the plate for this next year for our water users.
Good point. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. It's just a question. I don't understand why everybody doesn't pay the same price for water. A gallon of water is a gallon of water. So I'm just laying that out there. It's a question. Maybe at some point in the future, we can get that explained, why we would sell water to, uh, JCPenney's differently by the gallon than we would Steve Shishka. Just sharing it.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I'd just like to state again that, um, even alternate two is a very modest change in rates. And it would send a signal to the community that the council is concerned about conservation. They are taking steps to, uh, create, uh, a better incentive to, um, conserve without, without doing anything drastic. So, uh, sometimes just that message can be enough to get people to engage in, in appropriate conservation measures. And, uh, I'm not advocating anything drastic. It's just a very modest improvement. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you at 3 o'clock.